Hi y'all, welcome to Moon Graffon Show. Great to have you with us. It is terrific Tuesday. Ah, man. Hump day is already here, Brandon. Making it closer to your favorite day of the weekend, which I think is Friday during the week.
During the week is Friday, yes. Saturdays are much better.
I figured it was.
Saturdays are the best, actually.
Well, Saturdays, you got nothing to do and all day to do.
Ah, yeah. That's the best thing about it.
That makes it kind of good. Alrighty, 844-766-6607. Hickson has it hotline if you'd like to be part of the program. By the way, as the governor and some of the people in the legislature try to increase your taxes, uh, you're gonna get a little help from Louisiana car insurance rates because they're going up. See, this is something that you can't explain this to people in Baton Rouge. You can't explain it that if you get inflation, if your health insurance is skyrocketing, taking maybe hundreds of dollars, and in my case, thousands of dollars to pay, you can't explain this to them that the sales tax is the highest in the country. You can't explain that to them. You know, you can't explain that car insurance is shooting up, and then they want to increase taxes. You know, that's, that's unless you're getting an extra five or $600 a month, it's gonna be swept away with taxes. And, uh, why do rates keep going up? Louisiana Insurance Commission, Donald, points to a number of factors that are the rate of uninsured drivers on the road. Why do we have that? Many care the absolute minimum coverage, which encourages drivers to turn to the court system to get larger payout when an accident occurs. He added distracted drivers, cheap gas, which encourage people to drive more, causing more accidents, leaving the rising rates nationwide. I mean, I, I can't believe that's the excuses that we're given. They don't, people don't have this in other states. They don't have the same problems in other states that are very comparable to us. Donald said about forty percent of Louisiana drivers get by with the minimum allowable coverage. Most cannot afford to buy a better option than another roughly fifteen percent dry without coverage. Louisiana Department of Insurance last year approved double-digit rate hikes for at least five insurers that either took effect in late 2017 or will kick in sometime this year. I'm amazed that we're paying for car insurance right now. And before you ask me, I got good car insurance. I'm not buying the minimum. I just, uh, I just, you know, that's what's happening to us now. And yet, we got people down in Baton Rouge and the governor, I'm leading the drive to taxes to prosperity. So, if they've taken it in taxes, they've taken it in insurance, car insurance, they've taken it in health insurance. Our deductibles are higher. I mean, you could, can you see why people can't get ahead? The average middle-class person can't get ahead? If they've taken a few dollars here, a few dollars there, adds up to a lot of money. And there we are down in Baton Rouge debating on what taxes to raise. It's, uh, very frustrating. Governor Edwards yesterday opening up the special session, tells lawmakers, basically, he cut $672 million. And he's throwing examples out there. Ask somebody who had tops if it was cut. Well, it was restored too. All of it was restored. Besides, it's not a cut, Brandon. If I got a hundred dollars in one pocket and a hundred dollars in the other pocket, I put the fifty dollars out of one pocket and put it with the hundred. That's a hundred and fifty on the right and fifty on the left. And I tell you, I'm bickering because I don't have fifty dollars on my left pocket. That's what the governor's calling a cut. And he does this over and over again, but nobody in the press would challenge him except me. Nobody. Nobody. Well, I say nobody. A lot of people won't. And it's very frustrating to watch him say, got up there and talked about all the cuts. Ex the top recipient if they got cuts. Well, he's just moving the money around, delaying payments. That's not cuts. But yet, the governor is still bragging, he's cut everything. Folks, the other thing is, and I read this a lot, lawmakers and the press keep talking about tax reform. And folks, let me tell you something. Tax reform, real tax reform, is when they give you your money that you're earning back. That's not what they're talking about in Baton Rouge. Baton Rouge is not talking about real tax reform. They keep going back. The latest tax reform was the Stelley bill. That was never tax reform. That was total tax swap. We swapped from a temporary tax that we left, kept on the books for sixteen to seventeen years. And we made it into an income tax, and we beat up on the forty-five or forty-eight percent of taxpayers. That's all you got in this state, forty-five, forty-eight percent of income taxpayers. And they'll tell you, oh, eighty percent of the people, they're affecting eighty percent of the people. Class warfare, when the bottom line is it affected about forty-five percent of the people. And our taxes went up. The people pulling the wagon, it got harder for them. That's, that was a tax swap. Tax reform is when we win. Tax swap is when the government gets more. And what they're talking about in Baton Rouge is nothing more than a tax swap. They're telling you now that seventy-five percent of the people won't be paying. They'll pay less taxes. It only falls on the twenty-five percent of the people, which by the way, I kind of get a kick out of it because, yeah, I'm in that twenty-five percent, but it's really forty-five percent of taxpayers. The governor said it again that he only wants to raise taxes, keeping where they are, raise taxes on the middle class and the wealthy people. That's what he keeps telling us. He only wants to raise taxes on the middle class and the wealthy people. Well, the middle class and the wealthy people are the ones that, they are the ones that do all the pulling, all, all the pulling of the wagon with people sitting on the wagon watching. Underline his exact quote, and I can't find it now, Brandon. I got so many papers after reading all this stuff. But anyway, he also talks about how business leaders and local officials are tired of the endless financial battles, that we need to stabilize the budget, and this is gonna be good for business. I don't, okay. So you tax businesses really hard, and you tax people really hard, and you stabilize the state budget. How does that help businesses and people? I don't understand that. You take money from businesses, you take money from people, you've gotten plenty of money coming into state government, and all of a sudden, the businesses are gonna boom here? That sound like Robert Addy. That sound like former Senator Robert Addy, who voted for eight of Bobby General's budgets. That sounds like something he would say. Businesses are, we're sitting around waiting, okay, boy, we can stabilize this budget, then things are gonna boom here. And if they'll tax us harder, and they'll tax people harder, we gonna boom here. That don't make any sense to me. And that is not what businesses are saying anyway. They want to stabilize the budget, no doubt about it. But they don't want you to stabilize on the back of them where they gotta pass it along to the consumers. We gotta understand this. That you're not gonna get the truth from reading a Jim Beam piece or an advocate. You're just not. They're not gonna tell you the truth. They don't care about telling you the truth. They never have cared about telling you the truth. And so, we, we gonna fight and fight and fight to keep money so you can have more money in your pocket. Donald Trump did it. With the help of the Republicans, not one Democrat, the state's gonna pick up a lot of those taxes back from you and me, especially if you itemize. I just don't think businesses are sitting around going, yeah, tax us and tax the middle class. And if we do this, then all of a sudden, businesses are gonna come to this state. And the businesses that are leaving are gonna start staying, and we're gonna grow their businesses. Folks, it doesn't work that way. It never has worked that way. And trust me, it's not gonna work this way this time as well. Nobody's sitting around going, yeah, yeah. That's what you need to do, man. Tax us more. We'll stay. We'll grow if you'll take more of our money away. It doesn't work that way. It never has worked that way. The governor knows it doesn't work that way. How come we're gonna prosper if we have less and they have more? How does that work? Okay, Brandon, you get five hundred less a month. Now you and your wife are really gonna prosper. How does that work? How do you go, all right, thank you, Moon. You're taking five hundred more dollars. I'm pumped up about it. We're gonna have more money in government. How does that work, folks? All we've done is given them money, thirty, forty years of it. They didn't fix one thing. They didn't fix, they didn't fix the education system. They didn't fix the tax system. They didn't fix the roads. Then the unaccrued liability is about twenty-one billion dollars. They hadn't even made a dent in that. Wait till that bill comes due in 2029. How much income taxes they gonna raise on this thing? I told you, you can always tell when government is desperate for more money. Gambling reappears. The expansion of gambling is gonna get us there. That's what we hear. I, I just, as I watch this, and folks, I'm just trying to be honest with you, it's the same old stuff in Baton Rouge. It's a different name, the same old people. Some of the, different names, same old thing, except for L. Ariel and Big Lake Fannin and, you know, Francis the feeder Thompson. He, you know, those guys are same old stuff with them. So anyway, let's take a break, Brandon. 844-766-6607. Hickson has a hotline. Marcel Ross, be cool. We'll get you in the next segment. Lot to cover today. That's right, your insurance rates are going up again. Just gonna go by the reasons that Jim Donlin put down, and why don't other states have the same problem? Just kind of curious. We'll take a break, be right back. You think, huh? Hi y'all, welcome back. Moon Graffon Show, great to have you with us. 844-766-6607. Hickson has a hotline. Marcel, how you doing, sir?
Hey, good morning, Moon. So I wanted to bring something up. I don't know if it's been brought up yet. So, uh, everybody was starting to see the benefits of, uh, being able to take home a little bit more cash each paycheck with the president's tax bill. But in the state of Louisiana, in the constitution, from what I understand, whenever that sort of thing happens, the tax rate automatically adjusts.
Correct.
So, uh, state tax, the amount of state tax that's gonna be taken out of each and every individual's account, uh, paycheck goes up by a certain percentage. So that, that being said, do a standstill, they need to do a standstill budget. And there you go. And then with this automatic tax increase, there he has his, his increase in taxes that, that he'll be able to enjoy and spread out.
Well, let me tell you this. I found out yesterday with John Schroder. He said up to about three hundred and fifteen million. I made a phone call or two this morning. Uh, they recognizing now three hundred and two million of new money. And that's, well, listen now, that's only, yeah, that's the only on the personal income taxes. That's not counting, uh, the corporate tax cut. So it's gonna be some more money. You're probably looking at four hundred million dollars of extra money coming in from the taxpayers and from the business people, uh, that Governor Edwards is gonna get automatically. See, what Governor Edwards is trying to do is trying to buy the election. Now, Jim Beam won't tell you that. If he can get, he, he needs more money pouring in so they can wait. We having surpluses now. We having surpluses now. Look what Bill Edwards done. We need to reelect him. That's what it's all about. If Bill Edwards was reelected for four more years, I don't, the suit-happy lawyer buddies that he have that are bombing all companies are gonna bomb everybody then. Uh, so that's what this is about. They think taking money out of our pocket, which by the way, this is not gonna help the economy here. It's not gonna help the economy here. And so, this is what they think, though. Then the next thing's gonna be gas tax. Because they think if they can get a bunch of orange cones all out there, they're gonna say, look at the progress that Bill Edwards is making. And by the way, all of it would be false because they never proved, ever proved that when we gave them money, they were gonna fix roads. Ever. They never have. That's what this is all about. This is about his reelection. They keep saying the Republicans are trying to stop him because they know he'd be reelected. He's not gonna be reelected. He's gonna be beat.
Like you always say, Moon, uh, taxation to prosperity, that never work, it never works.
And that, but how can it work? If, I just made this example. I said, Brandon, how would you like to live on five hundred dollars less a month? He didn't say he couldn't do it, but that's not fair to him. That's not fair to him. But, but, but if government, if government has plenty and the businesses and people don't, how do government, how does government keep plenty? Because sooner or later, people, we got an outmigration problem again. People are leaving with jobs, and you can't tell them that. Anyway, gotta run. Thanks, Marcel. Appreciate it, man. All right, move on. Shreveport, Louisiana. Mr. Ross, how you doing, Ross?
All doing great, Moon. Everybody talking about Billhead Edwards. Everything he's doing right now is a Democrat playbook. He wants to run for president. This isn't about running for governor again. This is about doing everything possible to show the DNC that he is capable of implementing their agenda onto the entire nation. He has to play their playbook.
No, 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 he can't do that. He claims he's pro-life. He claims he's pro-gun. He's playing, claims he's NRA. By the way, NRA is getting ready to take it on the chin because people don't understand what they're talking about.
Well, you know, Nancy Pelosi and Clinton, they were all anti-illegal immigration, and now all of a sudden, they're all for illegal immigration.
Yeah, they, well, they, they.
To win the vote. And Edwards, we got a lost governor. He ain't doing nothing for our state except running for president.
Bill Edwards is, the governor's gonna be beat. He's a one-time governor. He cannot win the presidency. That's as funny as saying Mitch Landrieu, who's writing a book on racism and monuments, to make sure the black vote knows, hey, hey, look, all they gotta do is win the black vote at Democrat party, and you walk in. So Mitch Landrieu's writing a book, right? Mitch Landrieu's writing a book, you know, no more believing in flying to the moon. He's trying to get to the presidency too. John Bill Edwards is not gonna be president. I don't care what they say. His approval number is already down about seven, eight percent. And, uh, people, people gotta realize how he, how he got elected. And then, but the people in the press and him and everybody else, they don't realize how he got elected. And that same group of people that, that went against Vitter so hard are ready to vote against him. They're not ready to vote for him again.
Yeah, Edward signed the, uh, twenty-hour work requirement for food stamps. So he signed that waiver, took, took all the work requirements off of food stamps.
Yep.
So he bought and paid for all those votes.
Well, that's exactly what he's doing. You realize.
The governor, the governor, the governor supports New Orleans as a sanctuary city. That's another playbook in the DNC. The governor could, could shut down New Orleans and get all the illegals out of New Orleans, but he'd rather keep the sanctuary city because those are votes for him. All the illegals he can move in.
All right, man, we gotta run. Appreciate the call. 844-766-6607. Hickson has a hotline. Look, I'm trying to understand what he's trying to do, but it's not to be a pro-Louisiana. We got our migration, the businesses are struggling. He's over there, by the way, quoting Brandon. He is quoting now. You ready? He is quoting all these business things that got our economy way up, which is a bunch of bull. But anyway, we gotta take a break, be right back. Hi y'all, welcome back. Moon Graffon Show, great to have you with us. President Trump considering measures to improve gun background checks. They better get some people in the schools. Need people in the schools that'll shoot back. That's what you need. It's just to the point, that's what you have to do now. Nobody's done anything to change anything, except we come up with laws. I mean, I can't believe Senator Carter yesterday in New Orleans was bragging about having no, making it a no-gun area in schools, and that would stop what happened, and that didn't stop what happened. So President Trump considering measures to improve gun back, what do you do, Brandon, with all the technology? And when you send stuff to the FBI or the policemen, they have to act on it then, at that point. And we don't know how many people that are gonna nut up like that in this country. I just know if you're shooting back at them, they're probably gonna have a big problem going in there, shooting somebody, shooting a school up. So it becomes, the answer becomes something we never thought we would consider, but it has to be considered. Brandon, do you lock down the schools? Do you lock down the schools after school starts every day? Why do you lock them down? Everybody's in the school now.
I mean, I wouldn't be opposed to that.
I mean, do you lock them down? Okay, everybody's in here. But we also got twenty-five people that are armed in here, walking halls, in the classrooms. Do you have it where if they got a school shooting or something can go off, teachers lock their doors automatically? They're automatically locked. You know, they can get in the area of the classroom where there's no windows to see. I don't know. I, you know, I don't know about all that, but they can be doing something to stop what's going on.
Yeah.
Firing back at somebody that's nutting up is got to be the best way. Miss think, Brandon, even if you're crazy, you're probably gonna go do a shooting where you think you can get away with it without anybody shooting back. It's hard to believe we're saying it about our school, but we are. I mean, hold on just a second. They just text me. Uh, Maddie's having headaches. Hold on, yes, please. Give her, hold up. Gotta take care of my daughter, folks. Hold up. Okay. I took Tanya's off today too, so. All right, 844-766-6607. Sorry about that. Just had to take care of a little family business. Going back to this drivers, I, I, Jim Donlin, and by the way, I'm not questioning if Jim Donlin's right about this. Why do rates keep going up with our car insurance? Why they trying to tax us to prosperity? Car insurance is going up, liability insurance is going up. Uh, we, we got all this stuff. Healthcare has taken it out of a lot of us. People can call this program and tell us, I'm one of them can tell you how much healthcare has hit me. Now, car insurance? Uh, Bill Edwards, the governor and the government's tax, Louisiana government's taxes are gonna hit us? He's, Jim Donlin points to a number of fact, Louisiana highest rate of uninsured drivers on the road. And many others carry the absolute minimum coverage. You carry minimum coverage, Ben, right? I don't. I carry big coverage. Huh?
Yep. It depends on the car. We have multiple vehicles, so there's some that we have, there's one that we have full coverage, and there's one that we have minimal.
Yeah, because the car is not worth as much. But you gotta have liability because you gotta, if you get hit.
Oh, absolutely.
And there are some people that carry disliability, take everything else off of it.
I'm gonna assume that's what you mean by minimum coverage, liability. Right.
Uh, which encourages drivers to turn to the court system and get larger payouts when an accident occurs. He added distracting drivers and cheap gas. Well, let me ask a question. How can Texas and Mississippi and Alabama have any less uninsured drivers than we do? And if we got uninsured drivers, they got uninsured drivers. And if the percentage is a lot bigger here than there, why? Well, are they doing something different? That's what we need to look at. Nobody's looking at that. Uh, the court systems, uh, is bad, right? It's the worst, one of the worst states in the world when it comes to lawsuits. Distracting drivers and cheap gas. Now, you mean to tell me people in other states are paying the same price for gas, and they get the same distractions that everybody else has? Cell phones, hot coffee, kids in the backseat. That don't make any sense to me. They act like we're the only one, only ones with uninsured drives, drivers, the only one that got people with minimum coverage. You know why people got minimum coverage? It's what they can afford. The court system, we know we lawsuit happy here, and now we got a governor who's really lawsuit happy. But cheaper gas and distracting drivers, they don't have them in Texas and Mississippi and Arkansas? You mean to tell me if I go to Arkansas, I don't have to worry about a cell phone driver? I don't have to worry about somebody messing with kids in the backseat? I don't have to worry about coffee spilling or dropping ketchup on your lap? None of that happens in me, in Arkansas, right? Then it says cheap gas encourages people to drive more. What if you got cheap gas in Texas and Alabama and Mississippi and Arkansas, they're not driving more, but only the people in Louisiana are driving more. By the way, when the drive more is causing more accidents, leaves in the rising rates nationwide. Well, it may be, but it seems in Louisiana, we have the highest insurance rates in the country. They saying we got fifteen percent of our drivers dry without coverage. Well, why are we so high compared to other states? Are they doing something different when they bust these people? Or they're not letting them have a driver's license? Something's going on. Something's going on because, uh, like you said, the rates are just outrageous. I mean, I got ours in the other day, and a thousand dollars every six months. I think that was my wife's vehicle. Brandon, I don't remember the last time she got a ticket or wreck or anything. Thousand dollars, two thousand dollars a year for one, one vehicle, for one person.
I mean, have you priced with other insurance companies to see?
Yeah, but I don't like a lot of other insurance companies. That's why, I know it's hard. I'm just, I'm telling you what it is. Now, you gotta remember now, she, she drives an expensive vehicle. I don't.
Well, yeah.
And it has, some of it has to do with the, the cost of what that vehicle's worth. Now, I'm just gonna tell you, it does. It doesn't, they always figure, remember, the higher vehicle takes a lot more money to replace the parts and things of that nature. So, that could be part of it. But I mean, two thousand dollars for a year for somebody who hadn't been in an accident or had a ticket. That's one vehicle. I got mine too.
Yeah.
Mine's not as much. Mine ought to be more. I'm the one gotten the wrecks and the tickets.
Don't say that too loud, man.
I'm so thankful Lafayette, at least for now, doesn't have red light camera tickets because I, I haven't had one limit in a while. It's been kind of nice, I got to tell you. Let's go to Mike in Lafayette. Mike, how you doing?
Hey, good morning, Moon. Uh, I wanna make a comment about the, uh, taxes being taken. I read an article here the other day that California's politicians were sending out, uh, flyers that they were going to ask the people to vote for them to take the windfall of the government reduction and take that in taxes so they could operate the state. They want the windfall from that tax reduction that Trump did. Well, that, I said, well, they're kooky. You know, that's just the left-wingers over there. But then I read an article over here, well, we actually voted for the law that allows these SOBs to take the money, the extra money that the government cut on us.
But let me, but let me tell you.
And they automatically take it.
But, but, but in the, when people voted on it, it benefited the people. Now that the tax cut came from the federal government, we hadn't had a tax cut like this since Ronald Reagan, now it's benefiting the government. You see what I'm saying? When people voted on that, it was because, hey, man, I'm gonna get a break in my taxes. Because people need their money back. That's what you can't tell Bill Edwards and J. Dard, the co-governor. You can't tell people that.
I promoted it on the, I promoted it on the deal with all my neighbors and everything about it and said, hey, you, you can't judge this book by its cover. It is definitely gonna come back to bite you in, in, in sometime in the future or something like that. It doesn't say good in our, for us, a long time. It's something like betting against the house in, in Vegas. You're not gonna win. They're, they're not designed for you to win.
No, let me tell you something. When, when they, when they say we taxing businesses, they taxing you. When they say they taxing corporations, they taxing you. When they're saying they going up on a price to a company, it's coming to you. Everything they do is on the working man. And I can't understand why the working man on, is not living with what they're doing in Baton Rouge. I'm talking about living.
Oh, I, I am absolutely hot. I've been looking at my paychecks, and I'm going, where, where is it? I don't see it. I don't see this increase that Trump gave.
Well, some people, some people are getting, a lot of people are seeing it, but if you itemize, you really gonna get hit. I'm just telling you. Every time they keep talking about taxes, I don't care if they think, tell you they getting them off of you, it's, it's you and me paying them. I gotta go, Mike. Thanks for the call. We'll be right back. Hi y'all, welcome back. Moon Graffon Show, great to have you with us. 844-766-6607. Hickson has a hotline. Last caller made a lot of sense you get, and Brandon even said that. He had, uh, he had tax, he saw his tax break with Trump, and then next check, he saw it pop back with the state. Uh, state is gonna take, listen, it's not just rumor, the way it's put up in the constitution, uh, the way the federal government cut the taxes, there were some states that would win big, and there were some states that would lose. Apparently, we are one of the states that everybody was happy to get it once tax rates were where they were, but when they have adjusted, it adjusted your taxes, and the state gets to keep probably four hundred million dollars a year, every year. So that's why we don't need any kind of tax increase. Really, they ought to go down to Baton Rouge in a special session, lower to one cent to a half cent, which will bring in about five hundred million, four forty to five hundred million dollars, and they ought to be set. Done. Now, let's see if we got a spending problem. That's what they ought to do. 844-766-6607. Hickson has it hotline if you'd like to be part of the program. It's your opportunity to be a voice. Paul and, where's Paul? Sheraton, how you doing, Paul?
Good, Moon. Uh, my auto insurance has been going up too, and I never had an accident. I never had a ticket. I never filed a claim. So I called my auto insurance company, and I said, why all my rates keep going up? And she, it was one simple answer. She said, because your insurance commissioner said we could raise the rates. Just that plain and simple. No other reason that your insurance is going up. Your insurance commissioners allowed us to raise the rates.
And insurance, that's what insurance commissioners are there for. And they, they agreed, they agreed, no, they agreed, they agreed to, to raise it, and they do raise it. That's a fact. That is true what you're saying.
Well, yes, but it's a double standard to me, Moon, when somebody running for insurance commissioner is allowed to take campaign contributions from my. from my insurance company. If you receive X amount of dollars for your campaign, you know that it, you know, the insurance company gives you X amount of dollars, you know that insurance company is expecting something.
Yeah, but you know, in our state, we, liability insurance is off, I mean, we off the charts. We're off the charts when it comes to, uh, healthcare. How much we paying for Medicaid is ridiculous. And we off the chart when it comes to, uh, vehicle insurance. You know, Brandon, with Brandon's got a lot better deal than I got. Okay, but Brandon's is still high if you go to another state. If you go to another state, I mean, people come here. There are people that can call this program right here and say they moved here and could not believe what they have to pay for car insurance. I guarantee you, somebody can call and go, I was shocked. Cuz I've heard them call in before and they said they were shocked. But look, all that, all that, all that being said, they're trying to raise our taxes in Baton Rouge, you're getting hit naturally. Car insurance, healthcare insurance. I mean, uh, any kind of inflation that's going on, all that's taking money out of your pocket. And so, when we get a tax cut or get money back, people are excited about it because they need their money. Bill Edwards thinks only the state government needs money. He don't think you and me need any money.
Well, I, I wonder if other states, uh, allow insurance companies to give campaign contributions to the insurance commissioner. Only in Louisiana, I think you would see that kind of, uh, uh, humbug. Uh, but you, you know, uh, as long as they, uh, allow this to continue, uh, you, you, like I said, they, they give X amount of dollars, they want something in return.
Well, nobody's giving money. What people buy with, uh, when they give campaign contributions, it's probably people giving a bunch of money. They're buying influence. There's no doubt. That's why people give money to campaigns. They want influence. They wanna be able to pick up the phone and call that person. They wanna have influence when it comes to their business. That's, that's a fact. They do.
The only reason we paying high insurance is because of our insurance commissioner, Jim Donlan. That's the bottom line.
Yeah. All right, brother. Appreciate the call. It's, uh, hey, look, it's a battle. We battling that, but you can't tell the, uh, the brainiacs in Baton Rouge. You can't even talk to them. They ain't no best for us, folks. They know how many, how much money they need to take for your pocket and everything else. It's just frustrating. All right. NRA, as I mentioned yesterday, the NRA is getting ready to be tagged for no reason at all. The NRA does not advocate go and shoot people. The NRA, I, I heard a stat yesterday, Brandon. The NRA in the last twenty years has spent two hundred million dollars, okay, lobbying. So, that's a lot of money, right? You know what the unions spent last year?
Probably a lot more.
One point seven billion. One point seven billion dollars in one year. And the NRA spent in twenty years is two hundred million dollars for lobbying. And by the way, they ought to be lobbying. Uh, but the NRA is getting hammered for no reason at all. Matter of fact, I've not been a member of the NRA. I'm thinking about joining. Just to prop them up, cuz they've done nothing wrong.
I'm waiting to see when the NRA is gonna stand up for itself again, though. I haven't heard them.
Well, what you got is, Brandon, and we talked about it off the air. You got Republicans that will start to cave in if they think there's a big growing concern, and there is about what's happening with, with these school shootings. When we don't address the school shootings. See, we never addressed the problem, so we can't fix it. Okay? We got some nuts out there. People that are gonna nut up. So, what you do to address the problem is you go right to the heart of the problem. You go to the schools and you put armed people there, all over the schools, that's coordinated with police if they have to come in. Everybody's gonna know it's a coordination and you'll shut this thing down. Not a hundred percent, cuz there's no a hundred percent guarantee, but you'd shut down almost all of it. How do you think we're addressing the problem of illegitimacy? We're not. We're paying for babies. We're paying for kids to have babies and have multiple babies. We're not fixing that problem. We're not fixing the problem. Well, we just come up with another program. Well, we just give some more money. How are we affecting homelessness? We're checking LA and checking San Francisco what they're doing. They spend hundreds and millions and billions of dollars and they're getting more homeless all the time. They're not even dealing with the drug problem. Brandon, you ought to see the pictures of the drug needles all over the place in LA and San Francisco and there's poop everywhere, just getting to be a nasty scene. And, and you would think, well, all they do is throw needles at the problem. Well, let's give them clean needles. You've heard that. The left say that. That's why they need, they're gonna do it anyway, give them some clean needles. Uh, well, just let them go over here and use the bathroom or whatever. We don't fix the problem. We're not dealing with the problem. There's a lot of mental health issues there. There's a lot of alcoholism there. We don't deal with the problems to fix it. You know? You have a baby, you have two babies, three babies, we're gonna take care of you. Vote Democrat. We don't fix the problem. You know, we got a problem with illegals coming in. We don't block them from coming in anymore, kick them out. No, 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 no. We trying to make them citizens. That's not gonna fix the problem. We don't deal with the problems. You know, if you have a sinus problem, you don't take toe fungus medication. You don't take toe fungus medication to deal with a sinus problem. That's what government does. We have a road problem. We're not fixing our roads. You know why? Roads are not a priority. We don't deal with the problem and fix the problem so the, so it can get better. We don't fix the problem. You know, we don't deal with the problem. We never do. We never go to the heart of the problem. Illegitimacy has cost us trillions of dollars because we promote it now. It's okay. Gary in Sibley, how you doing, Gary?
How are you this morning there, Moon?
Doing good.
Are you, are you there?
Yeah, waiting on you.
Oh, okay. It's always that little delay with these cell phones. Uh, some of the kind, some disturbs me a great deal. I've seen these kids on TV, uh, caring on about the shootings and everything. Of course, now, right after the shootings, uh, you know, of course, you feel for them and, and everything. But it seems like these that they've been putting on TV are trying to be celebrities, like they're movie stars or something. Uh, with, you know, the, the things that they're saying, I, I don't, I was just wondering, was it just me or does it seem like they're doing that? Because, you know, things like that happened before, like that, uh, senator from Minnesota, you know, they turned his funeral into a campaign rally. And, but, yeah.
Look, the whole, this whole thing, would, and we'll talk about it later, but the whole thing with the, the gun control is being set up on the left. It's all a PR game now. Uh, they taking advantage of a crisis. They taking advantage of a bad situation. They're more interested in gun control than they're all stopping shootings at schools. We'll be right back. Hi, y'all. Welcome back. Moon Graffon Show, great to have you with us, eight four four seven six 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 oh seven. Hickson has a hotline. If you'd like to be part of the program, it's your opportunity to be a voice. Alrighty, uh, by the way, President Trump's pointing finger at Obama for Russian meddling, all that stuff. We'll get to that. Brandon, we do have a piece on that. We'll get to that in a minute. The only thing I wanna go into before we get to that was that they, I, 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 I've been reading what is, what does President Trump think about gun control? And he, he talks about maybe doing something a little bit more with background checks. And he can't say the right thing no matter what he said. If he called for total evac, totally getting rid of guns, the left would find a problem with that. Okay? It doesn't matter what he thinks. The constitution is set. We have a right to bear arms. It's one hundred percent set. You do not have a right to shoot somebody. You do not have a right to kill somebody. You do not have a right to go in a school and shoot somebody. All laws that are made that people aren't gonna pay attention to. You know, we look at the mass shootings. There was a report that I read, uh, that said basically mass shootings got one thing in common. You know what it is? They all been men. That's the, that's the biggest thing they got in, I, I would add this one. They were all crazy, too. They were all mentally, had a mental problem. But they were all men. And that means if we can get rid of men, we wouldn't have this anymore, I guess. I don't know where they going with that. They were all men. Okay, they were all men. I'm sure if we look deep and hard, we can find things that were only women. But this is the kind of craziness that comes out. Let me show you something else that's crazy. NPR did a report here in Advocate Staffing. NPR see how Louisiana's congressional delegation is voting on pass gun legislation. So, we got NPR who takes money from the federal government, who cannot survive without government money. They're looking at, uh, the Louisiana delegation, how they voted. Of course, they've already came out and said Cedric Richmond, that's the nut from New Orleans. State's law and Democratic has regularly voted to add gun restrictions, according to the data. Yeah, how's that working out in the inner cities for you? That's Cedric out of New Orleans? How's that working out with them gun restrictions? Anyway, they, they, they putting that out there. Uh, Trump's only support the effort to improve the system of background checks for people who seeks to buy guns in the US. All right, so we got background check. Okay, we can do a deeper background check. It doesn't mean you're gonna catch everybody. That's the problem, folks. Everybody wants to turn to the government to fix this problem. And I'm gonna tell you, that is the problem. They're not gonna fix it. Would you name the problem they fixed? Any problem that we had in this country that they have fixed? Can you name one? So, we're gonna turn to the government to fix the problems of school shooting? We better turn to people and former military and former police officers and former security people to set up a system in every state, state by state, their own way of doing it to stop this kind of stuff. You're gonna turn to the government to do it. You know, if you, you know, I just, I'm just saying. Turn it to the government to do it probably ain't the best answer. It's probably the wrong answer. Now, NRA, NRA, I've, I've never joined the NRA. But I probably now will because of the left and the craziness they going on there. NRA has done nothing wrong in this process, nothing. See, what the left needs, they need a scapegoat. The left always needs a scapegoat. So, the scapegoat would be the NRA because they're gonna favor a constitutional, more constitutional driven agenda, which is gonna be Republican agenda. I didn't say they always did it, but it's Republican agenda. So, they, they, they support very few Democrats. Very few Democrats. And, uh, but the NRA is getting unfairly popped. NRA really teaches people how to use guns and store guns and, and to shoot properly. That's what they do. They teach kids. They have programs in schools to teach people how to shoot. There's gun clubs and all that stuff the NRA has helped with in schools. So, people would know how to use a gun properly. But they take that as, see, the NRA taught somebody how to use a gun properly. They properly shot people. That's not what they teaching people. They have nothing to do with a school shooting, not one. But you see, the left needs a scapegoat. They got the emotion now. If you involved in a school shooting, I mean, or at a school with a shooting, you got the emotion played there to get this going now. But they gotta have somebody to blame, so they blame the NRA, then they look for people that supported the NRA, then they all of a sudden wanna vote all them people out to put a nice liberal leftist socialist Democrat in office so we can be taxed to prosperity. So, we can get rid of the First Amendment. I'm telling you, they ever get rid of the Second Amendment, the First Amendment of free speech will be dead meat. Cuz they already trying to control what you can and can't say now. The NRA didn't do anything wrong. What is the Da- Dallas mayor pro tem urges NRA to find a new home for their convention? A leader in Dallas politics does not want the National Rifle Association to meet in the city. I tell you what. I guarantee you, if the NRA, they ought to come to Louisiana. I guarantee you, one of our major cities would take them. Treeport, Monroe, Alexandria, Lake Charles, Lafayette, Homer, they will take it. Baton Rouge, I don't know about New Orleans, but they would take it in a second. If I was in people in, if I was in the big market, I'm not saying I won't go to a smaller town. But if I was in a big market, one of the bigger markets in the state of Louisiana, I'd be calling the NRA and say, hey, we want your convention. The mayor pro tem is urging NRA to find a new home in its annual convention. He's saying the meeting is not appropriate in Dallas in the wake of last year's school shooting, last week's school shooting in Florida and all the tragedies in Dallas with the two thousand sixteen ambush of the, uh, that killed five Dallas officers. See, we just losing our minds and we going after what the NRA, it's all kind of stories. We got the NPR looking at the votes for House delegations in, in Louisiana on pass gun legislation. And they gonna tie it to the NRA? I'm just, I'm just, I'm just telling you. NRA's done nothing wrong. Nothing. They done nothing wrong. They become the target because the left needs a target for people to go after. Now, who you gonna vote for? You gonna vote against somebody who's for the Second Amendment rights? Nobody wants a school shooting. I'm starting to want it. The left don't like a few school shootings to kinda keep all this stuff out there. Tell you what we do. The left voted against Donald Trump's tax cut. New poll shows what? People are loving their tax breaks. Why don't we try the right again and let's arm schools with people in the schools that will do it and volunteers from military background people. They can be checked out. Make sure they're decent and regular guys and ladies from the, from the military and from the police background, from security people, and, and let them roam the schools. And let the kids be safe and go to schools. And let's see if that works for a couple of years. Let's see what happens. And if we go two years and we don't have a school shooting, or we got an incident and, and one of these people shoots and, and kills one of these kids before they get many people, then we gonna say it's highly successful and the left was wrong again? Let's prove it. Why don't we do some intelligent, common sense school reforms on security that protects our students? Not a bunch of, let's get rid of all the guns. That's the most heinous, I mean, let's have, uh, uh, gun free zones. Boy, how's that worked out for us? But boy, they gonna go after the NRA. I don't care if you like the NRA or not. The NRA did not cause one of these school shoots. Not one. Had nothing to do with any of them. Absolutely not. One thing, not, can't even, that's, that's as, that's as, it's as, NRA is so far removed from that, it's like Trump and collusion. Trump is so far removed from that, it's not even funny. That's why they, they arresting all these other people and indicting all these other people. None of them are talking about collusion. We got a piece on that. We'll play that in a minute. Anyway. Eight four four seven six 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 oh seven. Hickson has a hotline. Uh, let's go to Jeff in Lake Charles. Jeff, how you doing?
Hey, so far, so good, Moon. And, uh, I called about two things. One of them is not what I was about to say, but you were leading in the direction that I was gonna make a comment on, since I heard you talking about that. It, does it, is it funny or is my imagination that when politically, when something really gets to the, uh, a problem, real big problem with a high ranking official up there or the president, that, uh, you know, we have somebody else distract us from that. We're getting real close on a bunch of things, serious stuff, and we go here. And I'm, I'm trying to think back to when, when Sandy Hook occurred and what was going on around there. But there's a, a lot of coincidental things that are going on. I'm going, why are we getting off of this thing right now when all that stuff is so big? But I, I digress. Uh, the, uh, the two things I was calling about, one was you're talking about the women out of wedlock and the state paying all this money to support these kids. I got the solution. It used to be, it used to be this way many, many years ago. That, uh, if a, a person couldn't support themselves, they sent them to a, um, an orphanage. Uh, whether it be private or state, and the, the people who are having these babies, time after time again, or can't support them, that's what needs to be. It's, it's tough love, but we're beating around the bush trying to think we're gonna solve all this stuff. It keeps getting worse and worse, just like you say. Really, I'm.
Well, we don't, we don't, we don't, we don't fix the problem. Example, I'll tell you, give you another example. We, we have given road taxes. We pay as much road taxes as Texas and Arkansas and Mississippi and Alabama. Not a roads on fix. You know why? Cuz we don't fix the roads. We don't put money on roads. We don't fix it. So, they tell us the problem is they don't have money. That's not the problem. The problem is they never fix the roads, but they come back and tell us we just need more money. Or where's the proof you gonna fix the roads? There's not gonna be any roads fixed. History says they won't fix the roads. The problem's not more money. The problem is you don't put the money on the roads. That's the problem. So, we don't deal with the problem. If you don't deal with the problem, you cannot fix the problem. If I had a sinus problem, do you think putting, uh, some kind of, uh, toenail fungus medicine on my toe is gonna help me with my sinus problem? You know, you know why it's not? Cuz I'm not dealing with the problem. I'm dealing with something totally different.
Well, absolutely. And then they've been found out. They, they think we get stupider and stu-, uh, more stupid and more stupid, let me put it that way. But I agree with you a hundred percent. The other thing I'm, I'm gonna say, and I, I'm gonna start something like this, now, because it's time. This is the prelude to something else that could happen, that, uh, we get so fed up, we really get engaged. But I would challenge everybody that listens to this program and people are talking about this right now. All you gotta do is get a stamp in an envelope and a piece of paper and write on it, um, no more taxes, no more fees. And, uh, send it to the, uh, Louisiana legislature or the governor or both.
Yeah.
If everybody did that across the state, that'd be the shot.
You're right, you're right. Good, uh, good idea. Gotta go. We'll be right back. We'll be right back. Back, Moon Graffon Show, great to have you with us, 844-766-6607, Hickson has a hotline if you'd like to be part of the Moon Graffon Show. Somebody just said, I have, I read the mass shooters are also all Democrats. I don't think you can, you could, probably can't say that. There may be some truth to that, but I don't, I don't think you can always say that. Somebody could take the, remember the shooting, Brandon, in the church, the white guy who shot, uh, uh-
Dylan Roof?
Yeah, in, in-
In South Carolina?
Yeah, they, they shot up a black church.
Yeah.
And then they found it with a rebel flag and all of a sudden all the monuments are coming down. Remember?
Yeah, I remember that.
You know, and I, I don't remember what all they found about that guy, so maybe I'm off on that one, but I remember they found a flag, so they automatically think it was a conservative and all that stuff, which, you know, what he was, I noticed he killed somebody, should've never killed those people. That was, that was pitiful. Uh, anyway, 844-766-6607, Hickson has a hotline. I can just say this, I'll defend the NRA. Had nothing to do with a shooting, they never have. Training people how to handle a gun and somebody goes out and uses it the wrong way, what about the 99.9% of the people they trained that use it in a proper way, that know how to store a gun? Besides, somebody just sent to me, there was 21 shootings in New Orleans last week, several were killed. Well, let's, I tell you what, we'll stop, let's stop. Instead of focusing on the NRA, why don't we focus on strictly inner city shootings and killings every day? I bet you'd be a lot more than 17 kids killed in the school. Don't focus on that, dude. Why? Because it's related off the drug trade, the dope trade. It's happening every day. Look at Chicago, record murders every year. New Orleans, by the way, that happened under Barack Obama. Barack Obama never did anything for the inner city people, nothing, zero zilch, nada. Kept their loyalty. Somebody made the point to me that they heard that NRA had gotten millions from the federal government. I don't know anything about that. If I was the NRA, I would stay away from any government money. Problem with government money is, is how you hook people in. Ax the state Medicaid program. Let's go to, uh, Tim on the road. Tim, how you doing?
Hey, Moon, God bless you for what you do. Uh, thing is on my mind is, uh, the governor wants the legislature, he's hanging it towards the Republicans to, to, uh, come together and let's, let's fix all this. In other words, let's cave. Uh, why don't he give up some of his base and why don't they tighten the strings on these people that are sitting there, that are, some of them are fourth generation of, of nothing but sticking their hand out for something for nothing and they're able bodied people? Why don't, why don't, why don't he tighten the vice there? I know that's his base, he wouldn't dream of it, but it'd be a good thing. I hope he's got somebody listening to the show at least, uh, if he's got enough honor in him, and I doubt that, at least he'll have to acknowledge that the idea was put in his head.
Yeah, well, now, he's not gonna touch his base. He's never gonna touch his base and he's never gonna agree to what the Republicans wanna do. The problem is you got Republicans, just like, I, I, the word was, I got a little birdie told me that Governor Edwards' people came to eat last night and there was only one representative that went to meet with him, and guess who it was? It was Republican, uh, uh, what's the lady's name? Brandon, the, the girl that was gonna run for office that had cancer, Julie Stokes. Julie Stokes went and meet with the governor's people, the only one. And, and that's why you hear, why you see Jim Beam write pieces, because he's tight with the governor, so he writes good things about Julie Stokes. And so you got Republicans like that that'll sell us out every time. I mean, she's a, the female J. Darden, how about that? So that's, means she's very liberal. I gotta run, appreciate the call. I don't think we have a time for the next call. So, and when we get back, I do have a piece I wanna play, Trump Turns Obama Corner Election Rigging Him in a Russia Debate. Thirteen Russians indicted for meddling in election, you know, none of this, they don't talk about no collusion at all. When do we get to collusion? When does Trump get in trouble for colluding with the Russians to, to change the election? Unless they changing votes, I don't wanna hear it. Anyway, we'll take a break, be right back. Brandon, they showing this as being a Facebook, uh, Maxine Waters, 21518. Now, I'm not sure this is right, but it's saying Maxine wrote, there's no rea-, I don't know if this is right, Brad, if I were reading it. There's no reason for anyone to own a gun. If a home invader gets past my armed security detail, which they won't, because I hire the best, then what good is a gun gonna do me? I got a feeling that ain't right.
I don't think that, nah.
I got a feeling that ain't right.
I don't know about that one.
I can understand the thought process.
Yeah, yeah. Maybe that's what she's thinking in her head. I doubt she put all that together.
Now, I had this, uh, young lady text me that said 2% of the $180 million, uh, of the $180 million budget to the NRA they get from the feds. She said that's substantial, you let your listeners know that. I just hard for me to believe that. I'm not, I'm not saying the lady's wrong, I just hard for me to believe they taking any money. They were taking money, I think they could shut them down instantly. You know what I'm saying? It's amazing though, Brandon, I go back to what I say. If you drive a car or drive a car drunk and you kill somebody, we don't blame the car, we blame the person. But the guy that shot these people and killed them in a school, he's now that's showing him on TV right now. Okay? And we, yeah, he's in trouble, he's in law, I mean, it's, it's, no doubt he's a big, big doo-doo, but all the focus turns to the gun. We never focus on the car. All right, a lot of people writing, we need to put God back, no doubt, we kick God out, you're gonna have this over and over again. Because we don't have, we don't have that, we don't, our culture is being split up. Our culture's being split up. We in a culture war. It's a spiritual warfare. It's a culture war. It's a spiritual warfare. We got people that hate the Constitution, they hate God, they hate Christians, they hate the Constitution. They hate right and wrong. And they're trying to take this thing down and, and it started with that last president we had. There are people that really think Obama was a great president. They really, I'm not making it up, folks. I'm really not, there are people that think he was a great president and will go always thinking he was a great president. That blows my mind. All right, Tony in Monroe, how you doing, Tony?
Doing great, doing great, how you doing?
Good times, sir.
Well, what I wanna, what I wanna talk about is, uh, I watch the news media and the news media standing at that boy down there in Florida, uh, bought that gun. He didn't. When his mother died, he moved in with this couple and they had the gun and they couldn't believe how he got the key to get that rifle. And, uh, they, uh, and another thing, they're, they're not listening to the kids down there. There's kids down there saying there was two or three shootings, two, three different people shooting. And there's one video, there's, uh, the, uh, kid was, had his cellphone up and a guy coming in there and saying, uh, how many of you got their cellphones? Everybody raised their hands and then he come in view, you could see who he was. And he said, shut them off and put them away. And then that boy shut it off and put his cellphone away. And, uh, but there's a lot of things that's going on down there that's just not quite right.
Yeah, but you hold up just a second though, you, what you're reading and what you're seeing, I'm not arguing with you, but it's no way me and you gonna prove it on talk radio. I mean, it's just no way to do that. I mean, I'm not down there, you're not down there, it's just no way we gonna be able to prove anything.
Yeah, that's the problem. The news media is not telling the truth about what's going on down there.
But the question is, when is the news media, they don't care about the truth. The news media has their agenda. The news media is so pumped up that we're gonna have kids protesting guns in this country. They're so pumped, they can't wait to put them on TV. They can't, they are, they got their agenda. They could care less about those families that are dead now. They could care less about what happens with that young man who's mentally unstable, who's, I mean, that fella, God in mercy is all I can tell you. You know, they don't care about that. Now, it's all about gun control and getting kids in front of TV cameras. There's nothing real about what the media's gonna do anymore. We see that. They didn't cover Obama, not one thing, what his background was, anything, who he hung out with, with people that hated this country. They didn't cover him during the eight years he was elected official, running the healthcare system, running the economy. They didn't cover any of that. Running our country about, uh, doing away with the borders. The federal judges he put on the courts, I mean, we got to deal with that for a long time, Supreme Court justices that never vote right. I mean, it's just over and over again, you know?
Yeah, they just need to go in there and just clean house. But I was looking at some statistics, uh, yesterday about the government, uh, you know, whenever the dictators took over, and they've killed over 260 million people. And then last year, I mean, since 2015, the cops has killed 3,733 people. And the mass shootings since 1982, this is just mass shooting from 1982, uh, is 600, 816 people. That's mass shootings, 816 people. And the cops has killed 3,733, that's, there's a lot of them through the drugs, and then you talk about the, the blacks on white.
How many shootings they have in, in, yeah, the inner city shootings are way worse and nobody wants to put film in there and watch that or nothing? Not at all.
No, there's only, I thought it was 6,000, 7,000 people a year. That's the, uh, you know, just the United States that are killed through drugs and, and that's not just guns, that's bats, knives, whatever.
Yep.
And, uh, it's just amazing. I sat there, watched that last, and I just turned it off. I said, there's no sense, even, even Fox News is talking about the gun, the guy stole the, uh, bought, bought the gun. He didn't buy the gun, he stole it. So, they're not, they're not touching that. Uh, it's just, uh, it's amazing. Then I sat there and I look at, uh, what, the last eight years, we had a weenie in there for a president, and now that we got a real man and a real woman in there, and I mean real woman, they can't stand it because they had run for the last eight years, I think they had run in, uh, New Bush's years. So that's 18 years that they just had, I mean, 16 years that they had, uh, run at the White House.
Yeah. All right, brother, appreciate the call. 844-766-6607, Hickson has a hotline. CNN, MSNBC pushed the Russia-sponsored rally. Michael Moore participated in it, all big Democrats. Don't ever stop. By the way, Brandon, uh, we got a piece, let's do this, let's take a phone call, take a break, we'll come back and play that piece, uh, dealing with, uh, what Trump said, dealing with Russia. And, uh, Mueller has now indicted some Russians. Now, he's indicted a, a new charge of an attorney, Russia making, uh, a lawyer was lying with Russian inquiry. Where does Trump get accused of collusion? Just kinda curious. Let's go to Ronnie in West Monroe, Ronnie, what's going on?
Hey, how's it going?
You're fine, sir.
Hey, I got one question, or I got a question to say. Okay, so exactly, they blaming the gun for school shootings, but exactly, who do they blame when a cop shoots somebody? And how's that any different?
Now, say that again, you kinda, you kinda broke up on me.
Okay, the guy, uh, every time there's these mass shootings, they blame the gun.
Right.
And who's the first person they blame when a cop shoots somebody?
The cop. They don't blame the gun, they blame the cop. Oh, no, see, that's, that's what happens. This stuff gets so political so quick and people on social media, they get everything out of social media, they believe everything they read. And there's your problem. That is a problem. That is a problem. We gotta take a break. You're listening to the Moon Graffon Show. We'll be right back. You like how they set that up, huh?
Yeah, they set you up, Moon.
No doubt. Hello, welcome back, Moon Graffon Show. But they didn't set me up before a minute because I went, I got off of it. Gee whiz. Anyway, 844-766-6607, Hickson has a hotline. All right, got a piece here I wanna play. Fox News, Trump Turns Obama Corner Election Rigging Against Him in a Russia Debate. So, this is a, uh, piece that I want you to listen to because this is very interesting.
Welcome back, President Trump once again claiming vindication in the Russian collusion probe with the Mueller team's indictments against Russians for election interference. And he's actually getting support from Clinton-era special counsel Ken Starr.
There's not a word in the indictment that suggests collusion. In fact, there's a word that suggests non collusion. And that's the word unwittingly-
That's right.
-that appears early on in the indictment. And, and that was in connection with Florida. It was not in connection with folks at Trump Tower.
But our next guest says it's not quite that simple. Joining me now to weigh in on that and the cyber threat posed by Russia is security analyst Ryan Morrow. Ryan, good to see you as always. Why isn't it that simple?
Well, it's because there are a whole slew of accusations against Trump accusing him of colluding with Russia. So, on the one hand, Trump can accurately say that the indictments indicate that his campaign was not involved with Russia's social media campaign. In fact, Russia was playing both sides, uh, pro-Trump forces and anti-Trump forces were being promoted by Russia. But when it comes to the greater question of collusion, uh, that Democrats and others are accusing Trump of, well, that investigation and question still remains, so this issue is not going away.
Okay, but Ryan, I, I have to ask you, you heard Rod Rosenstein saying in the press conference, and you heard Ken Starr just allude to it, the phrase that Rosenstein used was, there was no American knowingly, Ken Starr referenced the wittingly. That shows there wasn't that like conscious effort to do anything wrong. And the fact that no American did anything, Trump obviously is an American, how do you reconcile that?
Sure. Well, when you look at the indictments and the language it's used, it's related to the crime that they're accusing the Russians of, which is the social media campaign and identity fraud, and that's just one element of the whole collusion debate, uh, that's going on. Now, I suspect, uh, that Trump was not colluding with the Russians personally. Um, I don't see how that makes any sense from the Russian perspective, but I'm worried that the political ramifications of this are going to help the Russian objective and make, and really shield us from understanding the greater objective here, which is that this is a very cunning ideological attack on America's democracy by Russia, by pitting us against each other. And Russia understands-
Right.
-that if Americans cannot productively discuss their disagreements, then our democracy cannot function properly, and then that damages the movement for freedom around the world. That's what strong men like Putin need.
And that's a key point that I think was lost in some of the analysis that we've seen on other networks over the course of the weekend. That said, you did hear Trey Gowdy reference that, you heard Ken Starr, and you also heard the Facebook ad exec, I thought this was fascinating when this came out, Rob Goldman tweets that Russia didn't want to influence the election. Uh, he writes, this was on Friday, "Very excited to see the Mueller indictment today. We shared Russian ads with Congress, Mueller and the American people to help the public understand how the Russians abused our system. Still, there are key facts about the Russian actions that are still not well understood." And here's an interesting, the most interesting line, "Most of the coverage of Russian meddling involves their attempt to affect the outcome of the 2016 election. I have seen all the Russian ads and I can say very definitively that swaying the election was not the main goal." And that really sort of underscores what you're saying. The goal is to ruin American democracy.
Exactly. Uh, we are failing to understand the ideological dimension of Putin's strategy that has been in place for years, and you can tell by the propaganda that the Russians have been putting out. And we are failing to understand what the greatest weakness of Putin is, which is the threat from within. And so how does he best handle the movement for freedom that he faces? Well, if you discredit American democracy, you make democracy look like an illusion or something not desirable, then he can undermine his own opposition. And that's what strong men around the world want. So, from the perspective of strong men like Putin, our hyper-partisanship is our greatest weakness and therefore their greatest strength, and it's important for Americans to realize that.
We need people like yourself and your community there in counterterrorism to come together and fight the bad guys, but we need America to come together to not let this happen again. But we need America to come together to not let this happen again. Ryan Morrow, thank you very much.
By the way, and, and by the way, Russia, uh, Russia tries to do all kinds of crazy stuff, folks. No collusion with Trump. Never going to happen, never going to prove it. That's just made up. And so I just keep amazed. Russia, I'll tell you how bad Russia is. Russia, everybody, you know, the Olympics are going on. I know not many people watching them. I'm not either, but, uh, Russia got accused of doping and cheating and curling. Now, I got to tell you, folks, curling. I'm not, I'm not going to look down to curling for you people that like that. I just don't look at that as an Olympic sport. I don't look at it as a sport at all. I'll tell you what I wish there was substitute for curling. I wish there, this, this would make curling more exciting. Get rid of curling and let's do shuffleboard. Shuffleboarding. Now, let me tell you why I want to do shuffleboard. All right, Brandon, get rid of curling. I want to get rid of curling and change it out for shuffleboarding. Here's what you do. You can only do shuffleboarding if you're over 70 years old. And then I think we ought to mic up all the old men playing shuffleboard with mics. You, can you imagine those men during the Olympics telling the stories they could tell, the laughing, the cutting up and the joking? How much entertaining more shuffleboard would be than curling? I mean, could you having those mics on these guys telling those old stories over and over again and having fun and cutting up? I mean, let them drink too. I mean, Brandon, let them have fun playing shuffleboard at the Olympics. And I'm telling you right now, it'd be one of the most well-watched sports, if you want to call it a sport, at the Olympics. Old men telling stories, drinking, having a good time, being old men. Hey, John, you remember when we went fair? I mean, just, and we would be falling, I'd laugh and we'd be so entertained by shuffleboard more than curling. I'm just telling you. And the Russians cheated, Brandon, you saw the story. The Russians got busted for doping and curling. My next door neighbor, I'm not going to mention Boo's name. My next door neighbor that got into curling and he said, it's a mental game. You don't understand it because it's mental. I said, I don't want to understand it. I think it's great that people do that. That's, it looked like it's a lot of fun for people who like that kind of stuff. But I'm trying to get shuffleboarding in Olympics. I just think a mic'd up, these older guys, mic'd up, telling old stories about when they were hunting and fishing and their lives and they grew up and balled and all that with mics on them. It would be the most attractive. It'd be like, it'd be like watching something, you know, with Kevin Foot, Brandon, when we did the deal with the World Series. I mean, it would be awesome. That would be a lot better curling, a lot more exciting to listen to these old men back and forth. I just think it'd be a lot of fun. All right, that's just one man's opinion. I didn't cut what some of y'all think is a sport. I'm sure it's a, I'm sure people love it. Uh, I can't watch it. I can't, I can't, but the Russians cheated in curling. Cheating and curling. Somebody just cursed me out and said they love curling. Well, then watch it. I said there was nothing wrong with it. The Russians are, hey, the Russians are cheating to win it. Somebody said shuffleboard on ice. Take bets on who will fall first. All right, we got anonymous caller. Is that good or bad?
No, it's, it's good.
All right, here we go. Anonymous caller, go.
Yes, sir. Talking about insurance again. My son moved from Lafayette to Shreveport, Louisiana. We use, we use, uh, his address in Shreveport, which is cattle parish. His insurance went down $200 a year. Then he moved from Shreveport to San Luis, Missouri. Same insurance company, same dollar amount, la built in collision. He was paying 551 in Shreveport. He's paying 235 in San Luis, Missouri.
Yeah, you see what I'm saying? I'm hearing this all the time from people. I'm hearing it's a lot cheaper. Brandon, Brandon, talk to people that, if people, people had moved from another state to here.
Oh, man, I didn't realize there was that much difference.
No, no, it's gigantic, man. We pay, we are, we are off the chart in how much we're paying in our insurance, Brandon. Even though you got a better deal than me, these people that are out of state that are moving here, they're freaking out. Not to mention, they have to pay a sales tax on the car they bought in that state.
Yeah.
The difference of it. Am I right?